How you like your house?
I like your house, sure.
Not moving to people's cars.
I was about to say, oh no.
Just linger how so?
Yeah, Troy and I had a little project way back in the day. Yeah.
I imagine.
What, uh, Troy?
Yeah, my brother-in-law, yeah.
That's your brother-in-law?
Yeah, Troy is, yeah, so.
He's a good guy.
Anyway, I found an old three sixty. And I was about, it was a little four somewhere around that, Dakota. So I found a three sixty plus trailer and all that. Put it shop, we started tearing apart and, uh, anyway, long story short, I moved out to the beach, uh, put that little Dakota in the garage where it sat for about six years. Everything else, the engine, but I'm gonna put that three sixty, that little Dakota.
Everything go your way?
He's got a truck weighing about, what, two thousand pounds total? You know, he's never gotten into it. Wanted to, just never got it.
Yes, it cuts down on some of the time.
Adams comes in, well, it was two thousand pounds.
That's why tell me to.
Last one didn't have many. It was about twenty-one.
Don't get my face.
It's like an aircraft. But it's, as long as you can get it going straight. So it's probably a trick.
That is the setup. Cause if you ever have to get out of it, it's not.
A lot of horsepower for a car.
Shoot them out.
From camera?
All the time you get your foot off of it, it's done.
Yep, Jeremy, it was mentioned to me, uh, Bob Michael, when I called him. Troy did it, yeah. Once anyone under water in this store. Yeah, and he has another one in the trailer at Dot's house, so it's okay, it's still in the trailer.
The, which ones?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, one in the store.
Just take theirs.
More of a classic, not, not the racecar.
Working house?
Yeah, 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 it's pretty, still sitting around Tenth Street in Dot's. See, he put it in the trailer. Probably the only reason trailer didn't flip over, it's a car. But he lost his motorcycle, he lost his, uh, sixty-eight, you know, Camaro racecar. Lost all kinds of stuff.
That's a problem, anytime you, you know, you do stuff like that, that's a problem.
Man, I've watched him twenty years, put my car, build it, tear it apart, sit it three or four years, get the stuff back into it, build it and tear it apart. Dude, what are you doing? I mean, it's build it, leave it, you know? Yeah, I don't know, we'd go to Clark's, we'd go all over the place, you know, take pictures of it.
Turn it, don't take a pen at Adam, man.
Charge double for that.
He used to use it really. Hey, I love to do a shot. Just coincidental, got him off the line, you know, right from Christmas tree level, he took off and had the, the picture, had the rear tires wrinkled.
Probably that kind of use up, drag me.
Yeah, the rear tires are wrinkled.
You gotta be careful, Pete.
Good, he had the shop.
Left with the mayor's job?
That's a good shot, somebody that come.
A lot of these guys, the picture was just a way in the shop.
We're not used to that on this end.
I had some pictures, I don't know whatever happened to them, we were up in, uh, where that track was, and there was a guy that, uh, had a Pro Mod. And he was running in, uh, Anderson, Columbia, asshole company. And of course, he was obviously getting some bucks in. And I was taking pictures of him, I loved it, it was really quick. Taking pictures, and this guy gets to the end of the track.
Mike, you want me to go get your nameplate so you're not confused?
I had pictures of every one of them, and so, you know, the options were fast. And then, you know, got him to Villains, and it was just neat to see all that, and he just collapsed. He was good. And he was, he destroyed the color. He probably had more than a grand color.
No pressure, no pressure.
It's gone, it's fine.
No backup.
There's no drive train, none of that kind of stuff. That's all he gives, he'll chase him. And that's it. He's got one forty, right? He's got a hundred forty thousand. He's good, but he told that he did, he ran to push, push the drive train through and electronics. It's crazy. They run that on a Pro Mod, it's hard. This is the same guy that used to, how he used to work for you? When he was part owner and, you know. Porsche Rusty.
Oh, really?
Before we get started meeting tonight, I'd like to have Chief Police leave us, please leave us, and then I'll say pray for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. To Heavenly Father, we come to you once again, thanking you for this great city that we live in. We know we've been through a lot in the last few weeks, dear Lord, but you've been right there with us and we know it. We ask that you would continue to be with us tonight as we do the work of the citizens of this city. Rest all this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Now, Congress, meeting in Port St. Joe City Commission to order. Uh, several consent agenda, right, gentlemen? We have the, uh, joint, we have the emergency meeting from ten thirty. We have the joint city county meeting from eleven one. We have the emergency meeting from eleven one. And we have a regular meeting on eleven six. I would like to make a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion of Commissioner Hoffman.
Second.
Senator Mr. Howard.
Yeah.
Opposition?
Motion passes three up.
Building Department update?
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, just to update you, we've issued over a hundred and fifty permits, uh, to, to date after the post-storm. Uh, we've also, uh, got our substantial damage process finalized, and so we're able to get those letters going out. Um, the, uh, we also started a Facebook's page with daily citizen notification. And, uh, the last thing I'd like to update is our post-safety assessments. Uh, were completed beginning of last week.
How many inspectors y'all have on the ground at this time?
Uh, there's me, we have, uh, we have an inspector in the office for answering questions at full-time. And, uh, everything that's coming in is getting done on a daily basis, so.
But you're the only inspector right now?
Well, I got, I got others I can use, and I, we talked about it as needed, I can get them here within a couple hours, so.
Willie, I know we talked, uh, about, uh, I was informed that we were having an issue with demo permits and not issuing them. I know we've talked since then, you wanna explain that, how, what's happening there with the demos?
Yeah, there's no, there's no issue with that, what we were trying to do is finalize this substantial damage letter. Uh, we were just getting, uh, all the appropriate letter drafted. We started at the end of last week, getting it drafted and getting it approved, and, and so now we were able to issue those, as people come in, um, and with no, no hiccups, so.
What about, um, I had someone ask me or speak for me about, um, sheet rock permits. Do you have to have a permit for a homeowner to put, uh, new sheet rock in their house?
Yeah, if, if the insulation, which assuming the insulation was damaged, you have to come get one for the insulation and, and what it takes to repair the home. Um, it's mainly for that insulation, energy inspection is the main purpose. We have to look at that to make sure that their R rating is what it should be before they put the sheet rock up.
Is that in, uh, comparison to the county? Does the county require what you just explained?
I, I do not know what the county requires, I just know what the Building Code two thousand seventeen edition requires us to do.
If you were informed that the county was not requiring that permit, what would be your feelings on, was the county not, uh, doing what was required? Because if you remember, the one thing that I kept, uh, bringing up over and over is to be absolutely sure that the county building department and the city building department are on the same page. I'm just curious as to the sheet rock, uh, permit. I was, I was told, and I don't know that it's a hundred percent accurate, but I was told that the county did not require a homeowner to get another permit or get a new permit if they were replacing sheet rock.
The sheet rock is, uh, sheet rock, we're talking about insulation, insulation is totally different. So the sheet rock, uh, if it's, if it was, they're just replacing sheet rock that wasn't flooded and they're not even replacing their insulation, that's one thing, but if they're having to mess with the insulation, then that's a, that's a required inspection.
The insulation of, what about the interior walls? There wouldn't be any insulation there, correct?
Correct, if the, if they did put insulation, that would be sound protection, so. But the exterior walls that you had insulation on, if it was damaged or moisture or whatever, then it would have to be removed, therefore, an inspection of its replacement would be required.
Yeah, and I'll check with the county and make sure that information that I was giving was, was accurate as far as what they needed to get me for a permit.
Yes, sir.
I, I do know from working in the county building department that they don't actually, you don't have to actually pull up a, a, a permit for a drywall or, or insulation. But I do know they do like a scope of work permit. But that, that, it does have to be inspected.
Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir, same thing, the, the only sheet rock that we have to go see is in between, uh, like a dwelling where you have a renter on each side or commercial. So that's, that's the only, it's none of these residential's that we're requiring it because of the sheet rock, it's only because of the insulation.
How long will our, uh, RVs and things as far as their permit?
Uh, we're issuing the, uh, temporary structures, yes. We, uh, I know even the gas station got one there, uh, for the Exxon, cause we're trying to get them power, hopefully by tomorrow and, or the next day, and get that gas station going.
What was the, uh, when we waived those fees for some type of initial inspection, what, what exactly was that, Jim? That we waived, and are we still waiving it now?
I believe that was a life safety inspection, pardon me if I'm wrong, was that the life safety?
The meter base, the ma, the original meter bases, where we went around and looked at all the meter bases right after the storm? That was, that was what we did.
So if, if the city chose to waive inspections, uh, do we even have the authority to do that? Being that it's based on, somebody has to certify that the building is being done properly, correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah, so if it's within the building code per view, then the city could, could not, uh, subject it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Any other questions?
Alright, thanks, Jim.
Jim, I'm gonna turn it over to you right now.
Yes, sir, Planning Board recommendation, we did have a planning board meeting last Tuesday, Mayor. Uh, one of the items that we were trying to address was, um, accessory structures. We had several in the community that were destroyed, uh, due to Hurricane Michael. So we got a recommendation from the planning board, uh, it's there for your review tonight. Uh, basically, the, uh, the planning board recommendation was, uh, to the city commission to allow non-conforming accessory structures, these are there, most of these, Mayor, are within the setback lines. We had people that had sheds, carports, those type of things that were in setbacks, they got destroyed by the storm. So we're trying to find out, how do we handle those moving forward? Do we require those folks to have to come in and, and go through the full process of a special exception or hardship variance, or can we give some kind of, um, exception to be able to help out? And this is what the motion said, to allow non-conforming accessory structure with a prior permit or sufficient evidence, with prior structure existence and footprints, footprints such as Google Earth would not require a new variance or special exception. Also, no charge will be required for anyone with a prior permit. But a fee would be required for those who did not have a prior permit, and the duration of this special exception will be for six months. And it did pass five zero from the planning board. That's the recommendation from the planning board to, uh, grant this.
Your motion to accept.
Got a motion of Commissioner Hoffman?
Uh, second discussion.
Senator Commissioner Howard for discussion.
Um, I would, the one thing I wanted to mention, it's six months, right?
Yes, sir, I was.
And it's structures currently there, and also in the setbacks as well?
Yes, there would be ones in the setback right now, so that would be, that would be the caveat there, that you would be allowing structures that are in the setback that may or may not have had previous permits. But what you would have is you would at least have, either have a permit and those would be free, or you would have a picture, Google Earth, some other, uh, measure to show that there was an existing structure there.
If they don't have a permit, they, they just buy the permit?
They would buy the permit, and they would show where they had a sufficient evidence that the building was there.
How much is that permit?
Uh, is it fifty bucks? Do you have an idea what it is for the?
Accessory structures?
Accessory structures? Forty or fifty bucks, yes, forty-four bucks, whatever.
And then the burden of proving that they had a, a previous permit would be on who?
We would do everything we can to, to try to help the homeowner, but more likely that's gonna fall on the homeowner, yes, sir.
Does anybody from the public want to speak on this?
Come on up.
Jim Sicles, Bruce Porter Lane. Uh, the only thing, I was in the planning meeting also. Uh, everything that Jim said is what we discussed and approved. The only thing I noticed now is that we probably need to add conforming or non-conforming buildings, instead of just non-conforming. Because they'll still have to show that they had the building. If they had a permit, they still get it for free. If they did not have a permit, they'll still have to get one. That'll help in future years if we have any other issues. The permit will show that they had a permit to build it, and we shouldn't have to go through all this. But right now, it only reads non-conforming buildings.
Who wrote the, uh, recommendation, was it from the committee?
Uh, we didn't write this part, we discussed the part of non-conforming. And like I said, we didn't discuss conforming buildings that wanna be replaced. But at the same time, I think for us to control it for later date, if something does happen, we go through the same process, whether it's conforming or non-conforming.
Jim and I were just mentioning this, maybe I'm confused, but if it's conforming, then you wouldn't need a variance. So we're only talking about non-conforming, which would typically go with the application process.
But you'd still need a permit.
But if you're, if you're non-conforming, you would already meet the land development regulation, you would just go get a permit as normal, so you wouldn't have to follow this rule. You'd already be within the guidelines of land.
Right, but they get a permit for free if they had one existing. If they did not have one existing, they'd have to pay for a permit.
I see what he, what he's, I think what you're referring to is the ones that, well, it basically says if you'd already had a permit before, then you would get it for free.
Correct, but we're only addressing non-conforming structures. We're not addressing the conforming structures that were out there. All I'm saying is to add a caveat for con, conforming or non-conforming. And that, that way it clears it up. If somebody built one conforming but never had a permit, they're gonna have to buy one now. And that way, later on, we have the same issue. A building goes down, they can go back to the building department, it's gonna show they had a permit to build it, and it was conforming. Is all it's gonna do.
My motion will now reflect conforming and non-conforming structures.
Alright, you have a second?
I'll say.
Alright, well, the motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries three up.
PSTRA update, uh, we don't have, I don't think Mr. Kenny's here tonight, or, uh, Commissioner Ashbrook, so I do not have anything.
That's what we, Mr. Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. No substantive updates at this time. I would, uh, inform the board that Neil Dunn's office, Olivia Crosby, Neil Dunn's office has reached out about having, uh, what they label mobile office hours here in the city of Port St. Joe. Um, and in her conversation, my, Jim, um, she is going to use this building, uh, starting next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, from ten to two, um, to try and, uh, help the citizens here in the city in any way that Mr. Dunn can, and she'll facilitate that, be the liaison here for, for that. So she'll be here ten to two on eleven twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen, and she asked that I, um, bring that up for the board, so the public will be aware.
Sounds good.
Nothing wrong.
Alright, sir. Jim, back to you.
Yes, sir, the first item we have under old business, CDBG grant update, Mr. Bruce Pfauster's here to give us an update tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know from my earlier visits here last summer, that we had slim chances of getting the grant, uh, approved. And as, as scoring came in, we came in about the bottom third. And that's probably the difference in that last two categories that we didn't match, uh, in terms of dollars per household. Um, and it's not much of a remedy for that. I, I went this afternoon to look at the houses over in the Robins North Garrison Park area to ensure that maybe that might not be a suitable area to try to do gravity sewers. And again, you have issue of vacant lots and, or empty buildings, and, or there's only houses on one side of the street. So, we're looking at the, at the outlook of probably not having a traditionally sewered fix where you have to replace the pipe and repave the patch, cause it's cost too much to repave it. That's one of the biggest hard parts. Spoke with your engineers before the meeting, and it might be in the city's best interest to consider TV-ing the lines to find out which lines are amenable to being lined. Where you don't dig up the pipe, you drag a breaker through the pipe and break the existing pipe and pull in a polyethylene sleeve. And that's, uh, basically like how they redid my neighborhood in Tallahassee four or five years ago. Didn't have to do any repaving except patching some around the manholes. I believe you have the density to pay for that, except there's no reimbursement for that upfront cost of having to TV it. Ballparking, we're guessing at forty-five to fifty thousand dollars possibly would do the TV-ing effort in all of the unsuared areas of North Port St. Joe. Uh, to find out how many of those areas might fit in the next project, or a next further, or further project. But it doesn't look as if there's any areas that we, you know, that we didn't, that we looked at when trying to put the other one together, where you would have the density of houses per linear foot of sewer to go through with what we had been doing with rest of enough subdivision. The housing, the prices have gone up enough that it's just too expensive to do it that way anymore. And, you know, you can discuss it with engineering and budgeting and stuff, I think there, there may be pockets of money for that effort, but that effort would have to be done prior to developing a project. The next grant application cycle, I talked to Patrick Howard today, the next cycle should open in January, late January. And it would be coming for forty-five days, so that might be too soon, but it might be, you can get something done by then. The next cycle would be, they would hope to be back on schedule to have a cycle that opened in September, because they're just trying to catch up right now. I know it's not great news that we didn't get it, and I was kinda thinking, well, I might get lucky and would get it, or, you know, as they went through their, um, site visit processes, some of the applicants would get kicked out. Uh, but Mr. Howard informed me that probably wasn't gonna happen. They even took the money from Economic Development, and there weren't any applications in that, that field this cycle. They put all that in, and we're still just, you know, below that line. And I would've been here earlier to, when I, when I first found out about it. But in September, I had doctor's orders to stay home. By the time I got through with that, um, Michael came to visit, you had other things on your mind. So that's where we are with, with doing sewer in North Port St. Joe. We're probably gonna need another technology, and I believe in one of the next meetings, Clay might be able to tell you how much that might cost, do some field work to find out exactly how many areas, how many linear feet have to be done still, and what those linear foot costs are, and advise you on how to, you know, secure that service if you wanted to go that way.
So you think, what you're saying is you think it'd be beneficial for us to video everything and then submit with that?
With that technology.
That would possibly help us?
That would probably get you in the, in the fundable range, because then your linear cost, your, your costs per household would be much lower. And that was the one category we took a severe seventy-five point hit. We couldn't get to that next funding, that next area went from minus seventy-five to zero. So, that's an advisement, you know, that's, you know, another situation I can come down the next time if Clay wants to present that information, and we can talk about what areas might be, um, and what a next project might look like if we did that. But firstly, you would have to have the information on, you know, what that consultant cost might be. Okay.
Well, certainly ought.
Very sorry we didn't get it, but, you know, wasn't extremely hopeful, we did as much as we could last night.
Maybe next time, right?
Hoping.
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Uh, with FEMA, we were indicating there may be some CDBG money available. Now, I believe with CDBG R, I think, was the termination?
There's a, I asked Patrick about that too, there is a category called disaster recovery, the DR grant.
DR, okay.
And the DRs, uh, he's not expecting anything until sometime in January. And I don't know what kinds of things you can spend that on, uh, might be in any one of your pockets. But we'll see, cause you may have a lot of different needs, and when they came out with ERMA funding, uh, and Matthew funding, it was a lot of money. Uh, and certainly, we hit the international news waves with Michael. Everybody knows that Michael, that Florida got really hurt. So I don't know how much money they're going to allocate and, or when the announcement will be, but when it does, I'll certainly be able to report on what kinds of, um, projects we can talk with city manager, you know, and see where we're gonna go. I'd be happy to represent you there too.
Just keep your eye on that.
Yep, yeah, I've been, I've been checking HUD twice a week.
Thank you, Bruce.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir, we appreciate it.
Um, Mayor, on to Hurricane Michael to kinda give an update. Uh, we did have a conversation with Ashbrook the other day. They are starting the process of going back through the alleys. A lot of town has been cleaned up, there is still work to be done, but, uh, they made significant progress. Uh, we do need to get the state folks to get back down to work on our main corridors, that's what, but our big focus point's been this past week, to try to prepare for the holiday, so we'll continue to try to get, uh, the state folks to work on that. Also tonight, I think you have Ms. Brenda Gustafson, I think she's here tonight, I don't know if she wants to give an update, or?
Hey, while she's coming up, I have a question about Ashbrook. Do we have a contact with them as far as finding out what roads they are done with, and which roads they're about to go and make a second run on?
We do have a contact, his name is Dan, uh, we did call him the other day. Uh, specifically, what indications are right now, they're gonna be here for a while. I have not heard an end date. I'll try to get some more information if you'd like, to try to find out specific areas and where they're working.
I think it'd be helpful if we actually had a map or a list of roads that are prioritized from them. And, because I got a call yesterday, and lady on McClellan, almost McClellan and Sixteenth, is saying they came down her road, they didn't get her mom's, uh, debris. And it, you know, if we had some system to where we could look at, uh, a map, a grid map, or a list of roads, you know, we could, we could have an answer for the people that are asking, when are they going to arrive on, on our particular block?
I'll try to get some clarification.
And, and when you speak, you know, if you would mention, uh, the houses right there at the corner of Sixteenth and McClellan. I rode by there today, and there is a massive pile of debris where they cleaned out an entire house, and these big, big dogs.
This, ma'am?
Good evening, thank you for having me. We did have a meeting with, uh, Mayor Patterson and, uh, Lawyer Al Breton, um, your lawyer, your lawyer, um, on housing, uh, last week. Uh, just to give an update, um, a hundred and four families have actually qualified for housing. Seventy-two of those are owners, thirty-two of those are renters. Um, they've already had their site inspections done. We'll just wait for, um, moving the actual trailers, RVs and houses, and manufactured homes over. Some of the things that people need to understand before we'll bring a temporary home or a temporary vehicle onto the property is that it has to be free of debris. Uh, we have to have access to get in on the property. We will not clear debris to bring the, uh, unit in. It has to have utilities already available to it. It's the homeowner's responsibility to actually get those utilities hooked up. Keys will not be. Keys will not be given to the homeowners until those utilities can be shown to be working. The homeowner will have to sign a housing agreement with FEMA on what the use of this temporary home is. FEMA will also do a complete inspection before they let the people move in to make sure everything's working. We also will be checking with the homeowners at first every couple of weeks, then it'll go to monthly. They have to show continued progress on what they're working on. Just as a comparison, we have sixteen homes going in in Weewah, Hitchcock. So just to talk about that, we identified three hundred and sixty homes originally that would qualify. And the reason it doesn't match up is some people have found all other accommodations. And some people, their information doesn't, isn't correct right now, we can't get a hold of them. Or we've used their information and there's been no response from them. So that's why the numbers don't add up right now. FEMA also will have case managers working with the renters on working on getting them into housing as they go along. It's important to realize that these are not permanent structures, which your ordinances have addressed. And we will, FEMA actually will move them off at eighteen months. That's why we look for progress. Also, a couple of other things I just want to talk about. We continue to request people to continue to register. The DRC is open up by the library. It will be closed on Thanksgiving. But otherwise, it's still open eight to seven every day. A reminder that we're seeing more and more fraud and scams in the area. Some people posing as FEMA workers. Just as a reminder, FEMA will never ask you for money. Supposedly, they're telling people that they're FEMA workers and that if you pay them, they can move your registration up or something. We never ask for money. The fraud hotline, if someone does recognize that, is eight six six seven two oh five seven two one. Also, we've established disaster-trained crisis counselors. If people feel like they need some help that under the stress, which is very stressful for themselves or their families, they can call one eight hundred nine eight five five nine nine oh. Also, the emergency prescription program has been extended to December fifteenth. This is a free thirty days of prescription for anyone not having any health insurance. Disaster-related job opportunities, if you, there are two places to look, well, actually three. We have Human Resources, DRC that will take your application for, and then on USAjobs.com. That's the federal jobs line. And if you put in FEMA, Florida, it'll bring up the jobs that we're hiring right now for local hires. Also, you can go to disasterrecovery-employed-Florida.com. That's for state local hires. Also, twelve seventeen is the deadline for disaster unemployment assistance. So people need to go and get on if they want that it started on ten fourteen. And you can go back to ten fourteen and recoup any losses and it'll go at least until April of twenty nineteen. Also, the final thing I have is on free legal advice. There is a phone number that you can call if you can't afford legal advice. And that, unless you wanted to use Mr. Albritton.
He's not free.
He's not free? Oh, are you serious?
The best things in life are never.
Oh, that's a good point. But that number is one eight six six five five oh two nine two nine for that help. And I'm, we'd be open to answering questions.
I have one. Have you placed any housing units outside of particular homeowner lots?
Not yet, we're still doing site inspections for that. We are looking at, there are a couple identified that have utilities already set up. That's our biggest problem, we can find empty lots, but we have to have utilities. And so we're not, we can't put utilities in. But there are, have been a couple of lots identified and we gave it to Mr. Donahue, who's our housing specialist. And they have taken some inspectors out to look at those.
When you say you can't put in utilities, is that just the rule? Because obviously.
It would just take us too long.
To get them run?
To get them run and to get it set up and to bring the units in. It would just take too long in our experience, that's not, yeah.
Well, my other question was, is there anything available? And it's kind of a personal note because just to be full disclosure here. I have my parents living with me who were from May County.
You'd like to get them a trailer?
Yeah, is there a, because I'm sure I'm not the only person in this situation where we have people that are housing others that lost homes, but like in their case, they're given the opportunity to rebuild because they were staying in someone else's house, it's not going to be built. Is there a program that does anything for that situation?
No, they would just have to call FEMA back up and say that they don't have anywhere to live and they need to get something, someplace to live.
I think they're pretty comfortable right now.
Well, then they're good. We don't want to interrupt anything.
Could you bring me from home? I live in the front yard. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, ma'am, for all you're doing.
Next item, Mayor, we do have someone here from SBA that may want to give us presentation tonight.
Good evening, honorable commissioners. I am Tamim Jodri from the U.S. Small Business Administration. I believe I've briefly spoken to some of you, but not all of you. I wanted to kind of provide an overview of what we're doing right here in your county. Small Business Administration, we offer the low-interest, long-term loans to homeowners, renters, businesses and nonprofits. The word business sometimes throws people off, but it's quite crucial that people fill in the loan applications if they're referred to us from FEMA. We work hand in hand with FEMA, we're right there at your disaster recovery center at Memorial Library and in Weewah, Hitchcock also. Homeowners may receive up to two hundred thousand dollars for the primary residence if it's damaged with an interest rate as low as two percent. Homeowners and renters may both receive up to forty thousand dollars for personal property damages such as vehicles. And we've seen so many cases of flooded vehicles here. And once again, interest rate as low as two percent. Now, going to businesses and nonprofits, they don't need a FEMA referral, they can come in straight to our desk and talk to us. Businesses may receive up to two million dollars. Now, that's the cap, but there's no minimum that I'm aware of. So whatever the business needs, we can try and accommodate. The interest rate may be as low as three point six seven five percent. We also help out nonprofits. Once again, two million dollars, but the interest rate is lower, it can be as low as two point five percent. And by nonprofits, I'm also including churches. And we've all seen so many churches, just the decimated would be the right word for it. There are no application costs. Currently, as of November sixteenth, we have three hundred and sixty-six loans worth twenty-three million, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars that have been approved for Gulf County residents. These include three forty-seven homes and nineteen business loans. However, I do want to add in that out of fifty-three hundred FEMA referrals we have received, we've only received eleven hundred and twenty-four applications. So that tells me that a good number of homeowners and business owners are not considering this. But it totally goes to their advantage, going back to homeowners and renters. Say if the application is denied, the loan is denied because of, say, low creditworthiness, et cetera, et cetera. The case goes back to FEMA. FEMA looks at their other needs assistance funds to see if, okay, Mr. Smith didn't get an SBA loan, can we help him out with the other needs assistance? So if the homeowner or renter, they're not filling it in, you're really kind of blocking yourself halfway to all the federal tax dollars that should rightfully go to you. And even for businesses and nonprofits, like I was saying earlier, there are no application costs. So it may take, say, two to four hours every time if you're a business or nonprofit, because you do have a good number of documents to submit. But for homeowners, renters, it's a half an hour's every time. So my message to you gentlemen would be, please pass on the message that if you have been referred by FEMA to SBA for a loan, please take the time to fill this in. We're here every day, eight AM to seven PM. Just walk right in, there are customer service reps with my logo right here, just ready to help you out. We're here in your city and also in Weewah, Hitchcock. Currently, our deadline stands on December tenth, so we'd ask everyone to please consider filling this in before December tenth. That's your physical damages. And we also have economic injury loans. That means your business is just fine, but no one's coming in after the hurricane. So those loans are, the deadline is July eleventh, the same terms apply. That's pretty much my overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have at this time.
The only question, or I'd like you to do the, maybe the ninety-second spill on the caveats that are tied to spending. That you just don't give the people the money, right?
You're very right, Commissioner. The caveat would be, it has to go towards repairing your home, repairing your business or your nonprofit. That could include anything, as in like your real estate, your inventory, but it can't go towards a non-disaster expense.
So they would have to submit receipts or something, is that how it works?
That basically goes to the benefit of the applicant. We ask them to keep the receipts, so in case in the future, there is some sort of an audit process, it just goes to your benefit. Because keep in mind, the federal government can't duplicate benefits. If you're receiving the same amount of money from your insurance settlement, you can't legally be claiming the SBA loan as well. There's, that's double duplic, that's duplication.
But you, so you do, or do you do not give all the money to them upfront?
We'll totally give them upfront, but at the, say, let's just pick you, sir, for an example. Say we give you a hundred thousand dollars as a loan. But when the insurance settlement comes in, SBA will look into that money to see, okay, how much did the insurance pay you? And what's the uninsured part? That's the part that SBA is going to cover. I'll leave all of you my contact address, just in case you have any future follow-up questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have, Mayor, is a reference to Triumph Funds. We've had a discussion in the last few meetings, did have a good discussion with Jason Schoeffe in reference to the process of turning in an application. Also had a conversation with the county. Right now, what we're preparing to do is, the county is submitting an application, to my understanding, for a twenty percent loss calculation for this year. Trying to do it over a multi-year plan. What that would equate to the city is roughly twenty percent of our major taxes and with our water and sewer revenue, that would be about one point three this year if you took out your Avalon taxes, because you should get your full amount this year. Twenty percent next year cash, that is roughly one point six million dollars. That's the pre-application process, just getting the ball rolling, working with the county, trying to get something submitted on there. Any questions on Triumph? The last item of the whole business, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Langston. He's unable to be here today for obligations from work. Wanted to see if he, if there was a possibility of moving the meetings up with some conflicts he will have in the near future in there. See if the board was interested in moving the meeting times up.
I'm fine, I know you spoke to me, you probably spoke to these young.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
So you're okay with moving them up to twelve o'clock on the same day?
That's right.
Yeah, I think it's important that commissioners are at the meetings.
All right, we will do that. Can we get that in a, wouldn't it be done in a form of a motion?
Got a motion, Commissioner Hoffman?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lowery? Any opposition? Motion carries three zero.
On the new business, Waste Pro contract. Indication was, a few weeks ago, I did attend a county meeting and it looks like they are going to be going out to bid for waste services. We need to be start thinking about, our transfer station took a major hit from Hurricane Michael. It's in pretty bad shape before the storm, it's in real bad shape now. Not sure how that comes into play with the transfer station that is currently being used. I believe it's on county property and being maintained by Waste Pro. So we need to get our thoughts together as to how you would like to proceed. Our contract does expire in September and I believe the county's expires in May, I think. So, and I believe they have gone out to bid, so we need to be thinking about what you want to do.
So I, my, my thing is, I guess if we're going to follow that lead, we would have to give them notice. Do we know what the notice time period is?
We do need to go back to look at, it was either six, I believe it was sixty or ninety days. I'd have to go back to verify that in the contract in there to make sure.
And I'm assuming our rates would change if they are not, if they don't have the county. I mean.
Right now, you're under contract through September, I have to legal, but I know you are under contract right now through September. So I would assume that you have a valid contract through September right now.
Anything from you guys?
My only thought is, if the rates are going to go up for the city because of the possibility of the county switching service, then we need to be prepared to look at switching service to the group that may come to the county. Because the city is not going to entertain a rate increase. So we may want to speak directly with Waste Pro and let them know, that's our plan. If the rates are going to go up, we're going to go to looking for a different provider. I think they've done us a good job. I think the rate is fair, but if it's going to go up because they lose the county, then I'm going to support the city going to a different group if it means a reduction in rates.
Is it to wish the board for us to, to get a copy of what the county is working on for the RFP? That way you can look at it for us to review our current contract, is that what?
I think that would be helpful.
All right, we'll do that, we'll be prepared to give you an update for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Got to do what's best for the city, though. I haven't had any complaints lately on Waste Pro, anybody calling me personally.
The next item we have, moving along, is utility billing for October. As we produced our billing, we did see several customers that had damaged lines from the hurricane, trees on them, things they could not get back, people out of town to be able to, with the water run for several days. Staff recommendation would be for us to, to allow staff to do an average for six, six-month average on the water bill for October. The water and the sewer, your current policy allows us to do it on the sewer side, but the customer still charged for the lowest tier on the water side. We request that we be able to do it for October to give a six-month average on the water and sewer, Mayor.
So move.
Now, a motion of Commissioner Lowery?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hoffman. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries three zero.
That is all I had.
That's all I got. Tom?
Mayor, thank you, sir. The only item I have this evening is we're requesting approval from the board for a task order from Dewberry. And essentially what this is, is our first step towards advertising our lift station repairs, our control panels, our pumps, everything that's, you know, was damaged during Hurricane Michael for our insurance and for FEMA. And our, you know, we just want to make sure all of our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted as we approach this, because it's going to be a fairly large expense. And it's just something that we feel like we should, again, get permission from the board to move forward. We're looking at a very short cycle time as it relates to bids. We're hoping to get this advertised by the end of this month and received for your approval on the second meeting in December. So hopefully, we can have that turned back over to the panel manufacturer and potentially the electrical contractor to start work on either before or right after the holidays.
Gentlemen, any questions?
So what do you need us to, just to approve, so what are you to, get into this agreement with your mayor?
Yes, we just need approval of the task order from Dewberry. And then we'll move forward, you know, with that information that they produced for the bidding and then we'll bring all that back to you guys for approval.
Motion said.
We got a motion, Commissioner Hoffman, second, Commissioner Lowery?
Thanks, sir.
Any opposition? Motion carries three zero.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Well, that's it, we did, just so the board knows, we did complete the sewer insulation on Aruba yesterday. Monday, we're moving out to, we have three other sites as part of the motion last meeting from the board. So we're moving in that direction, so hopefully the next few weeks, we'll have a couple more to report back.
So we're, we're moving in that direction, so hopefully, the next few weeks, we'll have a couple more to report back to you on.
Uh, search his water.
Mayor, there's, this act, RFP two thousand eighteen dash fourteen should actually be under wastewater. Mr. McClam is on vacation today. Take the lead on this here?
Yeah, don't take the lead.
What we have is, if you remember, we had a consent order from the Florida Department of, uh, Environmental Protection, Mayor. Before the storm, we went ahead and went out to bid for it, because we put it in the budget. We budgeted roughly a hundred fifteen thousand dollars to do the project. We got our bids in. The bids are higher. If you turn over to page fifteen and sixteen, uh, we did a breakdown, because part of the requirement is we have to send back to DEP telling them how much money it's gonna cost. Uh, the cheapest we got for one year, uh, with a three-year contract is a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. So we're done for you to look at tonight. I did go ahead and send a letter back asking FDIP if they could, if there's any assistance they could provide with funding or a variance to this, to see if they could help us out. Because by the consent order to date, we have to do something by February. And that means spending a hundred fifty-something thousand dollars, and as we know, we have some unknowns with our future revenue and all of our expenditures we have. So right now, staff recommendation would be to get your thoughts together. We're trying to hear back from FDIP. If they tell us we have to do something, we're going to come back to you to look at award and bid. I'm hoping that we can find some kind of funding source or variance that says, okay, we'll give you an additional six months, somewhere along those lines, or to see if we can do something like, um, the state revolving fund. Like what, what we did before with, with the sewer lift stations. Mr. Philip Jones helped us out, filled out an application. Let's go ahead and turn that in too, just to see if there's any kind of funding, because if we can get a seventy-thirty grant alone, that sure helps us out tremendously, so. That will be our recommendation.
I'd say let's, uh, let's see what happens with your letter. See if, uh, I mean, we got the bids.
Yes, sir.
You sent that in with your letter, I'm sure, so.
They've got all this, so we're waiting to hear back from them, so if we can, if we give them a couple of weeks, we need to keep it on the agenda until we resolve them. Anything you wanna add, Kevin?
Uh, we're pushing water out of the tunnel, so we're back to discharge. Very good. It took us a while to get to this stage. So right now, we're pushing water down. We've got about a foot of water. And we're just, we're just gonna have to work seven days a week until we get down where we're going. It's gotta work me up. That's all I have.
Any questions? All right, finance director, nothing from him tonight. Engineer?
Nothing really to add, Mayor. Um, as of yesterday, there's still no asphalt or concrete plants up and running in Panama. So your road paving and your sidewalk project things, you know, they're gonna be on hold until those come back online. So no real update on any of those in terms of dates, hard dates. Unless you have other questions.
Thanks, sir.
Code enforcement, police department.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda tonight. Board has questions for me?
As far as code enforcement, it looked like, uh, Richie's been picking up some of these signs or stuff. I saw them behind the police department. Call and ask, can we start doing that? So can we do more of it? I think we're, uh, some of these companies are sticking more signs on the right away after we pulled a couple hundred probably already, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know what Richie's work schedule is or how many hours he can work.
We did discuss it with staff, and I had a conversation with Mr. Burke. Yes, he will be helping with the mountain. We have a mountain number, but we're gonna get another mountain for you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, thank you.
The only thing I would add is we've got a bid notice out to rebuild the police department. We've only had a couple of inquiries from contractors that wanted to come do measurements and look at the inside of the police department. So if y'all know anybody that does electrical work, sheet rock, flooring, any of that sort of stuff, we've got bids out. We'd like to get some bids.
Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you. On our city floor, um, she's not here tonight, of course, and just would like for everybody to keep her in your prayers. It's her husband has been having some heart problems, been in Tallahassee and ICU and everything. And, uh, Michelle has been up there with all our prayers, go out with her and her family. Uh, Jim, have anything to add on the Christmas on the coast? We sure got it going on, right?
Yes, sir. We got it going on, uh, twelve eight at six o'clock. Uh, we definitely want to keep tradition going, and we wanna get everybody out. We're working hard to get our downtown area back functional, so we can have a good Christmas.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, citizens to be heard. Anyone in the audience who wants to be heard tonight? Come on up.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Cheryl Steindorf, and I'm here to represent, um, the Pioneer Bay Community Development Corporation. And the PAC. So I have a, um, a letter, uh, that I'd like to present to you, the city commissioners, and, um, requesting that, uh, we would be given the opportunity to use that what's now being used as the game room in the Washington Gym as a meeting space and office for not only, uh, Pioneer Bay, but also for the PAC. Uh, we feel it's important that we have a presence, uh, over there. And, uh, the letter states that we appreciate all the work that you guys have done for us and, and how we'd like to continue working together, and we, we think that being there on site, uh, would be a good place for us to be. So, um, and we'd like to continue to work forward, uh, with some of those goals that we have. So I have a letter here just formalizing our ask, and, uh, I don't know who you want me to give that to, but-
Jim, I know you mentioned that right before the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Um, I want you to get the details on that.
I will. I'll get the details and get it out to each of you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Get them hands way up, there's an old man gonna see them.
Hi, Lorinda Genjol. Uh, the first, um, this is part of the farmer's market and the Christmas aunt parade. There's gonna be a special farmer's market that same day. It'll run from nine to three. And we're working in Chamber of Commerce, we're working with businesses to have open houses and to make it just a full Christmas Day downtown. So we're encouraging everyone to come out and please shop local. Um, it's expensive to put a store back together. And that was the first thing. The second thing, um, the Knicks on the Thursday, a week from this Thursday, there's gonna be a seminar out at the citizens, I mean, Senior Citizen Center. And it's, the chamber is sponsoring that, and we're gonna have a presentation by a public, um, adjuster, an insurance, um, lawyer, and another person who has a specialty in this. But it's to let people know when dealing with their insurance companies, because we've getting a lot of complaints about insurance companies. I'm going, I have the same complaints, guys. I can't help you with that. So we put this together to, so to inform people what their rights are and also what they shouldn't do, okay, if they want their insurance to come through. So that's gonna be at the senior center, center on the twenty-ninth from six to eight, and there will be refreshments since it's during dinner time. Okay, and we'll get some more information on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up in the back. I'm not. State your name.
Chris Gruball, one oh seven Monica Drive. Black pass, two pictures, tell them passing around. Those were taken today in regards to, uh, one oh three Monica Drive. Based upon the city ordinance of, uh, three eighty-seven nuisance, which has been in effect since October second, two thousand and seven. Thirty point two seven defiles. And one oh three Monica, basically going up against number eleven, number nineteen, subsection eight, and number twenty-one. Several actions has come up. Run the generator all night and sometimes during the day. This is before the storm and after. I think during one of the storm meetings, I came in here about this. To get the effect, at night, it gets so quiet, you know, you don't hear a lot of cars and stuff like that. I was just outside, and you could hear from that door right up there. But if you go down, back straight to the high school, third house on the left, you just stop. With your window down, you know what we're talking about. As far as other things, he's getting his water free. I know that y'all went out there before, the city did before the storm. He cut the water off, cut the power, got the power cut off where he was stealing it. But now he's getting his water down at the soccer field. I followed him. He's riding a bicycle down with a little red wagon behind it with three big water jugs, fountain jugs, and three smaller jugs in his front basket. He rides down the soccer field, but he has to push it back because it's so heavy. Now, I don't know what he's using the water for. Wash his clothes, using it in his toilet. But if he uses it in his toilet, he's not being charged service, charged for sewer. So where's the sewer going? Is he paying for it? No. After the storm, that big debris pile out there, some of it would, very little. Those were black plastic bags, which started to get opened up by dogs or whatever. Anyway, they picked up the limbs and everything, and then two days later, they came back and picked up his pile of black bags. So he's not paying garbage service. We know that. Waste Pro confirmed that, uh, last meeting I was at. The backyard has not been touched as far as debris. He's made a little path from the gate to the back of his house, where he has a generator and some blue, blue looking canvas tarp or something of the sort. Anyway, there was a lot of free services he could've got to come clean his yard if he couldn't do it physically. But there's three people living there. So he hadn't even brought the first piece of debris out of his backyard. And my thing is, well, plus he's got a lot of small dog delangle biters. Yell like crazy. He lets them out three or four times a day. There's a lot of profanity coming from that residence, directed at small kids. Couple days ago, I think Police Park was falling to it. Woman comes out there and goes, "Why aren't you profanity about the kids?" Damn price, can't let his granddaughter play outside because, okay, they'll come outside just to cuss and up a storm, and they don't care who cares, who listens to it? Now... Is the city gonna go back over and clean this thing up again like it did before? With my tax money involved? I hope not. But we gotta do something. Justin Crone's here. He lives right next to him. Father Lou lives next to him on the other side. I live at one oh seven, which is on the south side of Father Lou. Father Lou takes his hernias out at night, so he's pretty lucky, but we don't. So some actions gotta be taken, because it's depreciating our value of our property. Plus the profanity with the small kids out there and everything is not a good sending, so. We go outside, just listen. If you can't hear from there, drive down the road, three houses down, including one on the corner. Stop, really wind it down. You'll know what we're talking about.
Chris, I know y'all, y'all have been dealing with this for a while, and, and I, I hate it. And, uh, almost to me, I don't wanna say too much, but it seems like it's been a battle. I don't know if we should talk about it here at this public meeting, but what our might, our next steps might be there. Power's available, water and sewer are avai- available. So we're basically still in our, still in sewer services.
I know the school pays for the water, because they got soccer field now. And I haven't said anything to Jim. I'm gonna say something to Sissy Worley, because she pays the bills.
This is the first time I've heard about, uh, the ongoing. I, I knew about the first, the previous issue.
It hasn't stopped. Even before the storm, he was running generators and not picking up his trash, and y'all had to go out and clean it out. And you just don't care, I guess, but, uh...
I really don't know why the health department can't do something.
Where's the sewer going? They're not having garbage pick up. Those bags started getting a little rank at one time.
Jim, what happened when we leaned on the health department last time? Slap on the wrist and went, went on with it all?
Yes. The last thing, after we cleaned it up, uh, right before the storm, the last thing was we have to call for another, uh, code enforcement hearing. Uh, we did have a conversation before the meeting, trying to weigh what our options are. So if you can, if the board allow, um, city attorney and myself to sit down and get with Mr. Burke, we can get us a plan before the next meeting, kinda give you an update as to what we need to do. It, we, we stopped advancing forward due to the storm, but we need to get back on.
Should our special master be handling some portion of this? Or, or it, should we just allow our attorney to handle it or go out? I mean, I, I don't know. I just need, we need some advice and, uh, so we can help these residents.
As Mr. Anderson said, we had a discussion about this prior to the meeting. If the board would allow me to the next meeting, I'll come up with some, um, proposals and suggestions for routes to go. Once a decision is made on which route to go, it may involve our special master. But a special master, it ultimately just acts as a judge to determine if you violated the code ordinance or what have you. So, um, it may involve him at some point, you know, because that would end his role. But at this point, if I could have, um, till the next meeting, and, uh, my hope is that Jim and I and, uh, Mr. Burke will be able to develop some suggestions for the board to provide a long-term solution.
My input on this is we have a lot of options available, and I don't think we have done our due diligence in utilizing all the options. One thing that we can do, and I just learned that today, is we can, uh, balloon the sewer line. I'm sure you know what that means, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so let's do that, like tomorrow. So if things are gonna back up, they're gonna back up in his toilets. Um, I wanna remind the, the staff and the citizens that our job up here is to work hard for the people in the city that are doing right. That when we have someone that is occupying a house with no power, no water, stealing water, then our job then becomes to protect the ones that are doing right. So I'm familiar with that house.
I'm sixty-four years old. I got up, my wife worked, she was out of commission. I had to get my cut, limbs down, drag limbs out. My yard's neat, clean.
Oh, I, I know. I mean, the house, I'll just say it, the house has been used for a bunch of meth heads. And I've had, I've heard enough. There's, there's too many good people living there having to put up with this. So the city is now going to move forward with doing what we should be doing and following all the guidelines. I'm not saying we're gonna work outside of legalities. The police department, I'm gonna ask the chief that he goes ahead and looks at trespass warning this person or persons. Uh, speak to Jim Norton, get this, this, uh, school's approval. We'll trespass warn them from the soccer field. We'll trespass warn them from any city property that has water. We'll let them know, we're not gonna allow them to steal the water. Uh, we're just not gonna do that. It's not as if it's someone in need of water, uh, because of the storm. I mean, we have went out of our way to help people, but I'm not gonna help this. Uh, and when I heard this, now two meetings in a row, I will ask that clerk or Jim make this come back each meeting as old business. I wanna see it on our agenda, and I want us to discuss it each time we meet. We can have an update on what have we done. And then you and the other residents nearby, if you feel like we haven't done something, bring it back up. One thing that I spoke to Jim and the attorney about today, if we need to, we will pass an ordinance, an emergency ordinance forbidding all generator use now that the storm is over. The people that are using generators have no power. And, and I'm in no way saying that we're not gonna allow the homeowner to run a generator. What I'm saying is we'll use this tool as a way to sh- What I'm saying is we'll use this tool as a way to shut that particular generator off. In other words, we'll, we'll make a, an ordinance that says if you're going to run a generator now, you have to have a permit from the city. We'll give anybody a permit, other than that person.
He used to generate before the storm. He used the storm as an excuse.
We're going to start thinking outside the box, and we're going to solve this problem.
All right, thank you. It's time.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? Come on.
Chester Davis, and I'm speaking on behalf of Waste Pro. I, I wasn't consulted about this being on the agenda until tonight, but, uh, our contract for Waste Pro is based upon the city alone, not the county. Uh, when that contract was, uh, produced for the city, matter of fact, the county pigged it back off the city. The only difference, I think, is that the city has a better contract than the county simply because the city is mandatory, county is not. The other issue that you're going to have is the, uh, fact that you have a, a, a dump site that's on county property. That contract, I think, deals with the fact that there's so many years it was supposed to be turned over to the county. So that contract is still going to be in effect no matter who gets to bid. The Waste Pro will still be able to handle that, that, uh, place out there until, I think, the ten-year mark is on, it's supposed to go to the county free, free then. But, uh, I think it'll also impact the way that, uh, the collection is done, but not, it shouldn't affect the city at all. Uh, I, I think sometimes we're not looking at the totality of what the city contract deals with because of the fact that no hands-on, uh, the city got the best contract in the state of Florida. Simply because the Waste Pro only charges thirteen dollars plus per cart. City charges eighteen. Ten percent for the collection fee plus you, you got a percentage on dumpsters, and we pick up the cities free. So, you know, I, it's a different contract than the county. We only pick up the fire stations, some of the emergency places for the county. So, uh, you know, it's a different contract, different time set. Uh, we don't have to lose the contract simply because the county might decide, and they haven't said they was going to go anywhere, they just said they was going to put it up for bid, meaning that there might be some dissatisfaction somewhere. However, they haven't come and talked to us about what those dissatisfaction might be. So, uh, we're hoping that, uh, that the city would, you know, maintain that contract was simply because I think we have about five of the employees, six of the employees that lives inside the city limits, of course, ain't you? We need to consider that also. So, uh, it would have an impact. I'm not just speaking for my job's sake, but I'm speaking for the fact that when that first contract was drawn up, I was part of it. And I know that there was a percentage, I know there's supposedly increased percentage per year. But that was dealt within that contract. And I'm sure if you bring Waste Pro to the table, which is essential, that we talk about it before any decision we make. I appreciate that.
Well, I can assure you, Chester, that, and I, I hope you didn't, uh, misunderstand my comments earlier. I'm all about saving a dollar, but I like Waste Pro. I've been happy with Waste Pro. I hear very few disgruntled people with, uh, Waste Pro. I would prefer to keep Waste Pro, uh, in the city. I just hope that their price does not go up if the county goes a different route.
I don't think it would. I think we'd be able to, you know, subsidize some things here and there, simply the county has a different type of setup. And like I said, with the county, if the county went mandatory, it'll be a different setup altogether. But they're not mandatory.
I, I'm with you the whole way. I'll be new tomorrow, as long as our price stays the same and our service is just as good as it's been.
I'll convey that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? All right, commissioners, I'll start with you, Commissioner Hoffman.
Uh, I have a couple of things. First is I would like to, uh, request that our city workers, as far as the non-essential, city workers be, uh, allowed to leave tomorrow at lunchtime and observe the holiday half a day or... I think they have, um, worked above and beyond what we asked them. So, uh, if we can get support with that, I'll put it in the form of a motion.
I'm completely fine with that.
We got a motion of Commissioner Hoffman?
And just to clarify the motion, uh, when I say non-essential, I think we already have a list of non-essential personnel. I would ask that our, uh, department heads, um, look at that list, and if we can, you know, get a couple more people off, uh, I'll leave that up to you, uh, the leaders and, uh, the heads of departments, but if there's someone on the list that can go home a little early, uh, send them home. And then, uh, I'll go ahead and tell you, when Christmas comes around, I'm going to ask that we do the same thing, but we kind of do it with, if the people had to stay, we need to try and get them home, you know, the day.
About to work Christmas.
Yeah. You know, we're doing it, kind of like the state does.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second, Commissioner Lowry?
Yep, second.
Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries three up. All right, what else you have?
That's all I got.
Only thing I've got, uh, guys, is I, I know we've talked about it in the past, and we've had some issues with it, but, uh, speaking ordinance, um, we, we need something uniform, to where this person's not getting this amount of time to speak, and this, another person's getting allotted less time, uh, to maybe protect us from liability, um, and to, just to show fairness. And, uh, I'd like to see, like to hear from you guys, what you guys find with doing something like that and asking an attorney to draw something up.
I have looked at what the county does, and, and I think I would like to piggyback on something similar to what they do.
I, I could, um, present something at the next commission meeting for the board to consider, and then we can take it from there. The board, that's the board's pleasure. And I'll, I'll follow the mayor's recommendation and present something, um, substantial, similar, substantially the same as the county.
All right, anything else? That's all I have. Uh, I've got one thing. Go, Siminos! I heard ain't no Gator fans here. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving.